Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business/Work Session Meeting of September 6, 2018, the first meeting of the school year. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I hope everybody is staying cool out there today. All right, I'd just like to start with the resolution to approve the minutes for the August 16, 2018, and August 28, 2018, meetings of the Putnam Valley Board of Education.
Second.
Questions and comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, without further ado, we'll go right into our presentations. Dr. Wills, you want to introduce her first?
Yes, we are very pleased this evening to have with us our service that we have with Alteris, our safety consultants. Alteris has been, for us, a real godsend in helping us to both assess our safety situation, status, and also to give us suggestions and ideas for how to improve the safety and security here. With us this evening are the two principals of the organization, John La Placa and Cliff Gabrielson. Cliff is, does a lot of the work with us in our groups and in our emergency response teams and helps us to implement, and John is the force behind this project. And we're very pleased to have him. John was with the Yorktown Police Department for many years. Cliff has also extensive experience in security, and we're delighted that they're here this evening because this issue is one that we're all concerned about, that we're all most, it's priority number one for us. So, please, thank you. Would you come up and present for us? The board has received an assessment report from Alteris, and we're going to hear a little bit about that and about some of the things that they've suggested, some of the ideas, and also some of the areas that Alteris thinks we ought to be thinking about as well.
Cliff Gabrielson again, also we got him on, unfortunately. I have been working with the district as the...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, can you lift up the microphone higher?
Is it on? It will switch.
Oh, yeah.
Hold towards yourself.
So, you might want to mention again about your experience in law enforcement, which is, I know, is extensive.
I'll say, take two.
Take two.
I am Cliff Gabrielson. I am a senior consultant with Alteris. I also have a background in retired law enforcement or worked a lot in schools and with multiple school districts, but more importantly about what we are, as Alteris, are doing with you as a school district. We were brought in last fall, I'm sorry, last spring, but as part of what Alteris does is we are a company that's with about 50 school districts at this time and a little more than 200 individual schools. And what we were brought in to do was to help you guys deal with situations, and we like to look at it as an all-hazard approach, not just about the individual who walks in with the weapon, but also about other events. And specifically, since we've been with you, you've already had a few of those events happen, weather-related specifically. So, what we did, and I did specifically, is I came into each individual school and I spent a good two, three hours and methodically did walkthrough with administrator of the school buildings and the facility director at the time to be able to identify where you meant what we recommend, where you exceeded, and where you needed to do some work. And with that, then we compiled a report, and that report was then submitted back to you. Alteris is a company that will and has and does work with you, as you have seen, as the administrators have seen and the board has seen, put together the annual reports for the state and be able to compile that information directly to them. But I specifically am the one who has been the boots-on-the-ground with your individual schools, and after the assessment report last, you guys did get moving very aggressively with your training, and last spring I came in and spent a full day with each individual emergency response team going over protocols and best recommended practices on a national level and state level for dealing with different kinds of situations, so from lockout, lockdown, to shelter-in-places, to dealing with other situations which we're going to be working towards specifically, I'm referring to parent reunifications and different events that could happen that could put a little more pressure. As we look at schools when we come into it, we understand that, you know, you are administrators, there are staff here who are teachers, and there are students who are learning here. So, in terms of what you have to deal with, unfortunately, given society's change in the past two years has really put a lot of pressure on you, and we try to relieve that pressure by bringing forward different ideas, different requests. The benefit of us having worked with so many different school districts is not only that we come into you with what is recommended nationally, more importantly, what is required by a state, but also what other school districts and schools specifically are doing to help them deal with different situations that might come forward. So, what you have in front of you, what you've been provided with is the assessment report that was given to you upon the completion of my individual assessment of the district, where I will sidestep to say this: You have made an amazing effort, and it's notable when I walk in here beginning of your school year, from different vetting processes in this school and also the middle school, to policies, to procedures, to training. I recently spent about three hours with the district emergency response team a week and a half ago, which also incorporated local sheriffs and tried to establish that relationship in a more of a cohesive response to deal with different situations, as recent as spending, getting back to Dr. Wills recently when she came forward with a few scenarios that the team came up with and they wanted to understand how to be able to deal with. We are going to be following through as we go forward to continue guiding your direction in terms of your protocols you're putting in place, which we, John's seen excessive about 150 typically in our list when we go forward. Furthermore, I'm going to be coming back and spending individual time with each team at each building to do tabletops and assist them in trying to help them make their own decisions, given situations that should happen. Alteris is a company that is there for you for the year you've signed on and hopefully further, to be able to assist you in any kind of a situation when it should arise. As I had a conversation with Dr. Wills the other day, when an event does happen, you figured that you might be calling us, but typically the way it has been in two districts that I've worked with last year is we try to reach out to you probably before you're even calling us, because the way social media works these days and media works these days, we can hear about it, and when we do hear about it, we make a great effort to contact you pretty much before you're even dealing with us, to deal with that kind of a situation. So, I don't know if John wants to add anything. He came along tonight to show his support for how, and for me to be able to show him how far you've come along as a district, and I do applaud you for that, and I mean that sincerely, and also give you the opportunity to pose any questions you might have for either of us as we go forward.
I did get a chance to look at the report, and I'm just assuming that the trends, the double, you know, vetting within the two doors are trends you're seeing all over in all the other districts.
With regard to the vetting process at the front door?
Vetting processes and some of the other recommendations are sort of where all districts are going to?
Yes, it is.
Maybe we'll explain for the public what we're talking about. Originally, if you came into this building, for example, you would come into the school and there'd be a kiosk where you would register to come in as a visitor, where you would show your license and so on. With the help of Alteris, we rethought this process, and we actually visited other schools where the kiosk is between the two security, between the two doors that are locked. So, the visitor does not come into the school prior to the showing of the ID and that kind of vetting. So, we've done that both at the middle school and the high school, and also we have that situation at the elementary school as well. So, you'll notice that when you come in now, you see a piano and not a kiosk for registration.
Because clearly that made sense to replace the kiosk with the piano, but it is lovely.
It actually has been very, very successful. Students are playing that piano, and that's what we wanted. We wanted to have an atmosphere that was welcoming and positive and gave opportunity for students to use their voice. So, the goal of Alteris is not to turn this into a fortress, and I think that's an important issue for us. We don't want our schools to be that. On the other hand, Alteris is very focused on what are some strategies that we can use to make the schools safer, and that's what we've been doing.
So, when we take a look at the big picture, you know, I kind of, as a consultant, when I'm the one physically into the schools, I divide it into a 60, 40, you know, depending upon situation, and that 60% is pretty much procedures. How do you deal with a situation? How do you facilitate putting a school in lockdown? How do you facilitate being the one to be empowered to do that? And when we looked at the training aspect of it, that was probably really where we spent a majority of our time in each of the individual teams, is what's in place for them to be able to facilitate a lockdown of a school? Are they empowered, and how do they physically do so? And that really became the nuts and bolts of the training for each individual staff member on that emergency response team in each of the specific schools.
Anybody have any question? Okay.
Well, some of the other things I just wanted to mention that we did this summer in response, again, to Alteris's suggestions. When you have a lockdown, it could be for a long time. You don't know what will happen on the outside. And so, each school now has, in each classroom, a bucket with all of these survival things, things that you need for basic, I'd call it, survival of a group in any instance.
And I applaud you guys for having now in all the schools and classrooms.
This was done with student help putting it together this summer with some volunteers, and, you know, it's a statement. You never want to ever have to use any of it, but it says that we are, you know, looking at everything and taking all possible, you know, possibilities into account, and listening to experts who have been doing this throughout the region. It's been very, very helpful. Particularly, I feel that our administrators feel more secure when we're looking at scenarios, and we do a brainstorming based on what we've learned through this ICS, which is the Incident Command, which anyone can go on, by the way, and take this course, an Incident Command from Homeland Security, and which I did, and which talks about the different aspects, the different components of any type of a safety incident. You have your Incident Commander, you have your logistics, you have the information and communications people. These are people who immediately are there. So, communication is big for us, and we've been, you've been seeing that each day I send out a communication with a later start, what, where we're at, what we're doing, how it's working, because I feel that's our major responsibility of transparency. So, should anything happen, you can be assured that we will be, first thing we do after we call 911 and, you know, have contact with law enforcement, is that we communicate. And it is, it's a critical part of the process that Alteris has, also helps with. So, if there is something that needs to go out, they will be involved in helping us as well with that.
And somehow, it sometimes seems like this is all like, maybe high-tech or very serious, but I sat in on the elementary school vice principal's training or welcoming of the lunch monitors, and simple things like, like they all have a neon vest that they wear just so that students can quickly and easily identify the person that they're supposed to go to in an emergency, even if it's a substitute, it's not the normal person who's there. Just really basic things that make children feel more secure and adults feel more empowered and that they're, that they can do their job and protect children at the same time. So, it was, it was really good.
I mean, I think it's, there are large issues, and there are the small ones that you can overlook. So, when Alteris came, they examined all of our classrooms to see where would be the best place for students to go in a lockdown situation, because it has to be someplace that you can't see directly from the window. And every, we looked at every room, our principals examined every room, and we figured out where that place would be. Things like posting numbers so that are easily know where people are. All of our, all of our, all of the blueprints of the school and the, you know, the, both inside and outside are accessible to all law enforcement. They have them in their cars. They know what our schools look like and where they would have to come. So, this is a major undertaking. It is a strategic mini homeland security in your school district. And, you know, I don't believe that parents are really aware of the complexity of this process, and we're not allowed to talk about certain things because there is an issue of what gets out there and how we do it. But it is something we take very, very seriously and that our board has been very supportive of in terms of looking at everything that we can possibly do.
And I think I just want to add, and we will be having a presentation, I believe, in our September meeting, our upcoming meeting, that security in law enforcement is very good, but as a district, we're also very concerned about the mental health issues. This is a social worker in me talking, but the mental health issues that are attached to some of the needs for these security, these are not stranger danger, unfortunately. These are students or adults who, when I'm talking these, the perpetrators of some of these atrocities have been troubled individuals, and if we can get a handle on that earlier, so Natalie Doherty is going to be doing a whole presentation on the state's new guidelines on guidance. So, it's not just locking the door and vetting, it's preventing from all angles, and the two need to be equally important. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, I would just say that I think that is a big and an important component, is the mental health of our students and their families, being preventative, making sure that we, you know, extend beyond just our clinical world, but really into every classroom, making sure that we're, that we know students inside and out and building connections. I also just have to jump in and say, you know, with the recent training we've had, I think the, our confidence level that you've given us has been fantastic, just knowing that, you know, making sure that we understand the procedures, but knowing that common sense prevails and that in the end, when in doubt, be safe and pull the trigger of a lockdown or, you know, not pull the trigger, you know what I mean? That was a bad word.
Push the button.
Respond, respond. Bad word, bad word, bad word. But, you know, to take action.
Empowerment and make the call.
Being proactive and making sure that safety is our number-one concern, and that's, that is it. And there, I think that our roles are just so much more defined and becoming clearer through this process, but I think that clinical role and that the state meeting and identifying that as an area of need is actually a great thing, so.
You know, one thing that we, we learned through Alteris was that every teacher should feel that if they need to, if there's something going on, they can call a lockdown. We don't wait till we try to get to somebody who can do it. If there's something really wrong, a teacher calls the lockdown. And this is, you know, also something that we have as, you know, a possibility with our electronics. These are things that are different from the past. And the story that, that Alteris tells about this terrible fire that took place, what was it, in the 19...
1958.
What was it?
1958, Chicago.
1958, not that long ago. 1958, in a parochial school in Chicago where, I don't know, 50 or 60 students were killed?
Ninety, 95.
95 students. Why? Because only the principal was allowed to call, to ring the fire alarm and to call for an evacuation. They were so clear that there was this order of hierarchy, and this terrible thing occurred. And these are learning, you know, you learn from these things and you know that you have to empower everyone to act when needed. So, it's a major responsibility. We do rely on law enforcement. We have a wonderful new SRO here, Daniel Murray, and we have a new SPO too at our school, Mr. Ayavane, who is at our, Mr. Ayavane is a parent and here, who is also a law enforcement expert, and he is a SPO, our Safety Patrol Officer, at our elementary school. So, we are covered with excellent, you know, sense that we have people who are going to help us.
Okay. Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Wills, you've listed yourself as the opening of schools report.
All right, well, unfortunately, Jeremy is ill. Dr. Luft is ill. He couldn't be here, so I will...
Muddle through on your own.
Muddle through. Now, there's a lot to talk about. There's a lot that's happening. So, let me get this. So, we just have a couple of pictures today because one of the things we have, this is our new high school library look. If you haven't seen our new high school library yet, it's just opened, and this was one of the exciting aspects of our year. And at the high school, we had some freshman foundation program and opportunities for students to feel welcome. And one of our goals at our high school, our goals for the whole district, is to have a welcoming and nurturing atmosphere for our students. So, just a look, because we have to focus on the smiles and the energy that the students bring to opening day. We had a football game. The football game, by the way, was packed with people. It was clear that the community wanted to come out and see our kids. The kids wanted to see each other, and there is a tremendous feeling of spirit in the schools. So, I also wanted to just share with you, when I said students were playing the piano, this is a ninth grader who sat down and surprised everyone, and so the atmosphere, the, is, is, is very energetic and exuberant, and that's what we're hoping for. It was interesting, too, one of, to show you how much the students want to come to school, one of our students missed the bus and rode his bike to school, six miles. He made sure he got here. So, that was on, that was one of our freshmen on the first day. He wanted to make that freshman foundation program.
Pretty impressive.
So, our kids want to be here, and that was clear. They want to see each other at all of our schools. So, I also wanted to talk a little bit about enrollment. At this point, we have 1,634 students. Last year, we were at 1,624. So, we've grown. We didn't think we were going to grow. We thought we were going to decrease in enrollment, and what we saw actually was the fact that we had 94 students come in this year through our doors. Our registrar is Val Elman. She does a wonderful job meeting all the new families, and we're seeing many homes being purchased in the area, which is a change. In the past, we saw a great many rentals. Actually, we're going to be meeting with the real estate agents as a district office because we want to make sure that they, you know, have a good understanding of the district. It's always a good way to see how things are going, and we learn too about how the houses are moving and whether we're seeing more young people coming into the district. So, we are seeing a very positive flow in that direction. I also wanted to talk about some of the initiatives that started. Our new schedule started at the high school and at the middle school, a full block at the high school and, and at the middle school as well. There's a lot of excitement around that with longer, opportunity for longer and deeper work in the, in the classrooms. We had the unit lunch start, and of course, that was a little rough going to start, but I spoke to Ms. Centriari today, and she is making sure that all of the paninis are made ahead, a lot more. It can't be just personalized service. And the unit lunch means that students eat wherever they like. That's why we have places, even in the library, they can eat anywhere, they can go into the music room if that's where they want to be. Students get to choose. They get to make choices, more like young adults. And it takes a little while to get used to something like that. We've visited schools, other schools that have this, and NIAC, for example, and it works very, very well. And what we find is students ultimately, once they learn more about how that works, they do get their food and they go to be with their friends, or they go to a teacher that they like to, who has, you know, has an open area to be with. We have created many nice places for students to gather, and so this is, it's new. It's also going to be an opportunity for clubs to meet during that time, as I said, more like a pre-college. When kids go to college, this is the way it is. It's a much more free-flowing opportunity for, for that. So, a lot of work is being done too, to make it work. It's the first day, so it's a little difficult, but we know where we have to make some, some improvements. We also, if you notice, we have two areas here. We have not just this area for, for serving food, but we have the area behind it, so we have a separate area where that gate is on the other side of this, where the, actually where the SRO used to be is now a place where food is served as well. Other things that are going on, we had the, the later start and the traffic, and we have been working nonstop. I think that's why Dr. Luft is probably ill. We've all been hovering over the battle plan, so to speak. And day one, we did not have the full, you know, everyone there, so it was sort of a pilot.
God bless you.
And we made some changes in day two, and the changes were made for safety, and we have other changes that we will be making in order to make the flow better, to make the car flow work more smoothly as well. But all in all, most, most people are very congenial. They know that we're trying to create a safe environment. Barbara was there. We were all wearing our orange vests and being cheerful and moving people along, but we, we debrief every day and we work to make it better and smoother every day. We have had some issues with our bus company. We're not pleased, and I, you know, I'm not, you know, embarrassed to say that. We are not pleased, and we will be monitoring very, very carefully over the next few months, you know, and we will be doing what we need to do. But the other side of that is that they, the issue, a lot of the issue has to do with the scarcity of bus drivers, and we've, we've been actually advertising here so that we can try to get some bus drivers locally, you know, people who might want to do this, and they've been somewhat successful. They're not on yet. They have, you know, they had to give their training, their CDL training, and the licenses are coming in the next week or so, and then they'll be on, and that will create the consistency that we need. We need consistent bus drivers, and that has been the issue when subs are brought in because they don't have that, the person. So, that's, that's going better. The communications piece, we're working on them with as well, having a dispatcher there. We may have to add a dispatcher of our own because our bus drivers are working, people who do dispatching are also bus driving, and it's, it's difficult for Mike, who is a wonderful, wonderful transportation head here, to, it's difficult for him to do everything.
Well, and you need somebody available to monitor phone calls and feel for parents.
And we started a phone call process that Mike Lee helped us so that that phone, you never, when you call, you will get someone. It will be a trunk call, it'll go to the next, to the next, to the next. So, you might not get someone at Transportation, it might go to Elementary, then it will go to our office. So, we were manning phones all, you know, yesterday, late afternoon. I want to thank Jeanne and Mike. She went down to the bus garage, worked there. We, you know, I was answering, she was answering. It was, Dana was on the phone, all, you know, we were busy talking to parents. We were busy talking to parents. Today, I called forty-eight families on the E8 bus because of the elementary issue we had. Called every single home today. And I spoke to people. And what I honestly, it reaffirms your faith in humanity. Because once you talk to people, they understand and they're positive. And the best thing we can do is to reach out and to talk to people. That's what we believe in. We also started something new at our office. We collect the taxes there. And we've had people coming in. And that's a good thing because they get to see us. They get to see the whole office. They get to see the people in the office. Again, it's the communication. It's bringing the people in. And it's working very well. And I think all the things that we're trying to do are, you know, to get that communication going. We've been talking a lot about the facilities planning that we've been doing over the last year, really, having the committee meet. And now we are planning to have a... The board will be voting on a proposition to have a referendum vote in December. And we're starting to talk about this at every one of the back-to-school nights. Jeremy, I think he... He's going to have to buckle up. He needs that. He'll be fine. He's probably watching now. Jeremy, stay well. Get well. It's on antibiotics. But he has been working very hard on his presentation and has done a lot of work on the design. And I think this is something very special that people will connect with. Most of the work would be at the middle school where we feel we have great needs. The building hasn't been touched since nineteen seventy-two, basically. And they do great things there and they don't have a very good venue to do it. The performing arts, our food service, you know, these are things that we'd like to improve. Our music programs. We want to have places where kids can really show what they can do. And right now, our cafeteria there is a very poor place to hold these performances. And we'll be able to open it up. And really, the photographs of the rooms and the things that people will be able to see about what we're thinking about, what the vision is, that's happening. And we're showing this at all of the back-to-school nights, starting with the kindergarten.
Can I just add?
Please, please jump in.
So I've been out there in the morning. It's a whole new vision of school. But one of the things that I'm so pleased to see is that the administrators and the aides and the people that are out there are practicing what we tell students all the time to do, which is that sort of growth mindset model of you make a plan with all the facts you have. You watch it unfold. You change and adapt. You try a new way, something that's going to make it better. You don't throw up your hands and just say, "Well, I give up. It's not working," whatever. It's every day. As the buses are pulling away, there's this group of people saying, "Okay, so what worked? What didn't work? How can we change it? How can we make it better? How can we fix it?" The only other thing that I found myself saying a lot was to middle school parents as they pulled by. And the child in the car was frantic about being late. And I kept telling them, "Don't worry. The teachers know that buses are delayed. They know that this is the beginning and that this is a slow process. Your child will not be punished or held accountable for being late." You know, that we understand. It's kind of nice that the students are concerned. But I didn't want them overly worried. And those were the only parents that were upset because the child in the back is kicking the seat and saying, "I got to get to school." So all in all, I thought, I thought it was a positive.
Well, it's a great way for us, too, to be out there and seeing people coming in. We enjoyed it. I also wanted to mention in this discussion of the facilities that another aspect of this project would be some type of a health and wellness, we talked about this, center here. So that we would have a place for practices for the, you know, for the sports. Soccer and all the sports could practice. But a place also for the indoor recess for the middle school. Right now, by the way, the one, you know, some of the wonderful things that have happened this summer is that recess at the middle school is no longer in the parking lot. Talk about safety. That was one of the first things that Altera said to us. "You have your middle school kids out in the parking lot? Do you know how these cars..." And the latest thing is cars doing damage. And this has been there for, you know, for years, forever. That's where the recess was. Now recess is in a beautiful spot behind the school. But, you know, a place for indoor recess. This would be a health and wellness center. The wrestling and the cheerleading could also practice there. And there would be a track around it. So it'd be a wellness facility used by the public, used by the schools, and so on. So there's a lot of exciting, you know, things to think about, components of this facilities, facilities plan. So I want to make sure that I thank Dave Spittle for the work that he's done this summer. It's been really remarkable when you see that even the signage here to make this traffic system work. That was a huge undertaking. And so much has been accomplished. We have to be grateful for that. So I also want to, before I forget, I see one of our new teachers here because he could not come when he was appointed and I wanted him to come. So thank you very much. This is Michael Soprano. This is our new middle school music teacher. Michael, congratulations. Come up and shake hands with the board. He missed the ceremony.
Welcome. People may not know that Michael has been, Michael has been involved well before as an employee. He's been playing for our variety show, I think, almost since the start of the variety show. So we took him out from the dark and put him in front of students now.
So with many, many years of experience in teaching and could teach strings as well, which is one of the things we talked about if we ever wanted to begin. We haven't completed our goals document yet. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the process that we used and what we've been talking about. So what we did this year is we started the goals process with the administrative retreat. Then we brought these goals to our Board of Education and then to our Citizens Advisory Committee, which we need another T in that committee. Is that a PDF or can I put the T in? I got the T in there. I can't stand it. I'm just one of these.
We're teaching editing, so we want to be able to pick up mistakes. So we're practicing.
So the, this has been a great experience. And what we used, we have a sort of a mission statement that we started at the administrative retreat. How do we create, it was an essential question for us. How do we create a welcoming learning environment where relationships are nurtured, accomplishments are celebrated, and all are empowered to learn and grow? So, you know, last year, we had building relationships as our major theme. And this year, we expanded it to be a little more specific. And the focus here is really about the student experience. And there was a book that recently came out called Transforming the Student Experience. Because in order for our students to be successful in the world, their future, in their world, they're going to need to have opportunities for more expression, more voice, more choice, more opportunities to shape their world. And that means shaping their own experiences in school as well. And so what we're looking at therefore are ways and places where we can help to make this happen, to transform the student experience. So this book that Murray wrote, Thomas Murray, has within it eight keys. So these eight keys have sort of become a framework for us for looking at ways to shape the student experience. So the first key is leadership and school culture. How do we do this with leadership and school culture? Well, I mean, if you could think of some examples just from the photographs today, the piano in the, you know, in the lobby is a way for students who might not be in the athletic... They might not be in sports. They may not be on the football team. But you know what? They have other things that they can bring to us. And we put it right out front rather than waiting for a performance. They can bring that to their fellow students. They can take part in things. And so everything we're looking at will have to do with how do we develop this collective vision for student agency and collaboration, involving students in decision-making, more opportunities for students to make decisions in the school. They're doing this at the middle school with their, with the student government group that really is led by, facilitated by Ms. Mangieri, talking about ways that they can make change in the school, that type of thing. Then if you see the red, that was, I believe, the goals, the board. The superintendent search that they'll be doing this year will be a way, again, to look, how do we look at the culture? How do we shape the culture with a, you know, with a, bringing in a superintendent? Ongoing, at the same time, thinking about, you know, what we're doing now. How do we continue that and continue that process? Ongoing support and training for our administrative team. A welcoming, engaging culture, strong listening leader, and so on. Then we had the CAC, the Citizens Advisory Committee. And they talked about different ways. Need to create an atmosphere of social acceptance of all children in order to empower the individual child to feel he or she counts. We haven't consolidated these things yet. We're still working because the teachers added theirs. We don't have that on here. So we're trying to, we will attempt to consolidate the ideas in our goal statement. But I wanted to just, one of the, at the CAC, it was mentioned that social media is a large part of the culture. So if we're looking at laying the foundation in the culture, how do we deal with social media? And social media used well can help us and help others get a sense of the school. And we need to be customer service-based and try not to assume people know things. So this is where we're really trying to communicate as much as possible so people are aware of how we're thinking and what we're thinking about. The second key was the learning experience that has to be redesigned and made personal. So there are many ideas, many ways that a classroom becomes a place where students explore interests, have choices in how to reach their learning goals, different types of strategies that get students involved. You know, one of the programs we have, which is the New Mandarin Chinese Program, it's amazing how much engagement goes on when there is a distance learning program like that, where the teacher is there in front of them, but not in the classroom, on the screen, teaching them directly, but not right there. And there are some amazing engaging conversations, small group work that's done in that Mandarin class. So the students are practicing their language skills. Students following their passions and interests. Focus on the knows, then move into the need to knows in order to get to the next level of solving problems or to create a product. So those are all ways that we actually are looking at redesigning the learning experience. You can see there are many ideas. The third key is that decisions must be grounded in evidence and driven by return on instruction. Instead of return on investment, it's return on instruction because these instructional skills and strategies can help us to change student experience. But we have to see whether they work. And so how do we assess those? And what types of assessments do we use? Different types of performance assessments, different types. For example, in science research, that's a teacher. That program has taught us a lot about how students learn and then how they present their work and they become performance assessments. Real-world problem-solving, someone wrote. Showcasing learning. Key four is that the learning spaces must become learner-centered and visually reflect our culture. So if you, I was talking before about the facilities plan. That facilities plan contains within it these learning spaces, which will be active learning spaces. We have the all-room. The new library here at the, at the high school is a place where you can be actively learning, not simply sitting as we did in the past with a book. There are places where you can use technology, where you can gather. And we're hoping to use it as a performance space as well so students can actually show their work. So there's a lot of excitement about the learning spaces and what they can do. We have the maker space at the elementary school. We have a place there with, there's a club. Students use it for their, for their actual curriculum work, but also as a club to learn to design things and solve problems. It's been a very successful club there. Professional learning must be relevant, engaging, ongoing, made personal. We have a new innovative teaching program where teachers are studying shifts in the way they teach. And they're very excited about how they can change their classrooms. And as part of this, they get to choose different furniture for their classrooms that will make the classrooms more interactive. They are able to do some of the things that they dreamed about doing in the classrooms. So shifting of instructional pedagogy. The next one, key six, is technology must be leveraged and used as an accelerant for student learning. So we're looking at how we use our technology. Are we using it effectively to teach and to learn? And there's a program called Flipgrid. And we've had this, we've had presentations using that where students get to talk about their work. They share that on little videos. And it's much more interactive. And once a student has taught you how to do something, we know they've learned it. And that's what Flipgrid is great for. Key seven is the community collaboration engagement. That has to be woven into the fabric of a school's culture. So we need to, as I've said before, we need to have more interactions with the community, more ways to have the community involved in what we're doing. And more communication. So sending out continual communication on what's happening so that everyone is aware. We have very well-attended back-to-school nights and homework help. And we don't have that many people on the homework help nights. But we've been sending out videos. So we've been trying to communicate in a variety of ways. The high school uses social media very effectively, always sending out things. And so does the middle school. So we are, we are getting better at using the new technologies. And finally, the last key is critical. It's the foundational key. Students that transform learning are built to last as financial, political, and pedagogical sustainability ensure this long-term success. So the voting record for our budgets has been very effective, very successful recently because we've stayed within the tax cap. And you know what, people? I went to get my hair done at one of the salons here in town. And the talk was of the rebate checks that people are getting. They have really been very pleased. And the reason they're getting the rebate checks is that we've stayed compliant with the tax cap. And I think we've shown that the public can trust that we are going to do things in a way that's sustainable financially. And one of the, you know, the major points with the, this facilities plan is that there is no tax impact, that there will be no tax increase with this plan. And so it's a really, it's what we, one of those return on instruction investments. So that's really what I wanted to talk about today. But there's one more thing I must bring up. And it's something quite on the other side. It's very sad. And we were very saddened to learn that a former superintendent here in this district has passed away, Mary Ann Doyle, who was director of student services here in nineteen eighty-one. She became superintendent in nineteen eighty-six and left in nineteen ninety-one and came back for five years in two thousand. And she passed away yesterday. And out of respect and a sense that she was someone who really believed in the things we're doing now. We're doing IV. I know she was a great believer in that and in a global citizenship. I'd like to just ask for a moment of silence, thinking about Mary Ann. I'd like to just ask for a moment of silence, thinking about Mary Ann.
Okay, our next and last presentation is, I just got rid of it. The, it's the first reading of revisions to the Code of Conduct, Policy 5300.30, which is the prohibitive student, prohibited student conduct. So are you gonna, you talking about that?
There'll be a public hearing on this matter prior to the next board meeting. Tonight will be expected first reading. The second reading would follow the public hearing and then the board could choose to adopt it that night.
And the board, yeah, the public hearing is always a little bit before the board meeting begins, okay?
About 6:30.
Yes.
Okay.
So the items in red, it's not showing. They're bold, they're bold. They're bold, okay. So under trespassing, students, the part that's being added would be students, so the first section on trespassing says, "Students are not permitted in any school building other than the one they regularly attend without permission from the administrator in charge of the building. Students are not permitted to be in any marked unauthorized area of a building that they regularly attend." So if a portion of the building is marked that it's unauthorized entry, they can't enter. The reason for that is danger, safety, and at the high school, one has to be very aware of areas of the building that are not monitored or easily seen due to, for a variety of reasons. But safety is the primary issue. Cell phones are included now, will be included in the Code of Conduct for misuse of cell phones. So misuse of cell phones could be inappropriate texting, it could be something during an exam where cell phones used inappropriately, or when asked to put cell phones away, this type of thing in a classroom. So cell phones are part of these computers, that are part of these electronic devices that we are concerned about, where we're concerned about misuse of the, of the device. It's not that they can't have the cell phone, it's the misuse of the cell phone. Where are the others?
Number 13.
Keep going.
Keep going, 13.
No, you're going, it's page three. There it is.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Yes. This is, vaping has become a major concern and we, we've talked about this here at our board meetings. And so we are adding, making it very clear that vaping is not permitted, so we have to add that. So in all the areas where we talk about tobacco use, we're adding vaping.
And that's not simply just a student issue either. It's anywhere on the campus by anybody.
Yes.
Vaping, New York State law, it is not permitted.
And this is difficult. You know, it's difficult for us to go up to an adult and say, you can't smoke on campus because, you know, but it's something that we have to follow. So.
And then the last page, one more.
Just for the community, there is no smoke on campus, even if the school's not in session. The law says you cannot smoke on school grounds, period.
And that's other people who use our building also, correct?
So the other addition is a clarity, really a clarification, threatening, hazing, harassing students or school personnel face-to-face is what was added, over the phone or the internet. Those are prohibited actions. You know, another thing we talked about, that actually I've talked about with the school principal, this is not on this Code of Conduct, but just something that we've talked about. So when we talk about our consequences of violations, we've been thinking about the fact that we'd like to create a situation where we can give an in-school suspension, if you will. We, we have to give in-school suspensions now. We do that as a way to keep from having to send a child home and the students do get their work. But between a detention after school and something where they're actually losing time in the classroom, we thought we'd, we'd look, we were looking for another consequence that was perhaps more, you know, persuasive for a student not to want to have it. And we were thinking about a Saturday detention. So it's, it would be something in between.
It's a little breakfast club, but we won't make it fun.
It would be between a detention after school and if something is serious enough, but we don't want to actually have them miss class, we were thinking of a Saturday detention. So this is something that's in our minds. We'll be talking more about it and thinking about it.
Don't you forget about me.
Okay. Thank you very much, Monty. Okay, so we will wait for the next board meeting for our curriculum report from Dr. Luft and let him keep his germs home and get better. Our student representatives hopefully will begin at our next meeting. Is there anyone from the PTA, PTSA out in TV land that wants to speak? Okay. And we, we do have, I'd want to acknowledge members of our education foundation are in the audience, so thank you. And now I'd like to open it up for public comments on any, on agenda items. Okay? All right, moving on to new business. Mr. Ferro, start us off with number one.
Resolved on the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Melissa Cefaro, CPSE, CSE's chairperson from the district effective September 21st, 2018, as per Document Number 4219, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? I just, on behalf of the Board of Education, want to wish Melissa Marissa very well. She served us really well in her time here and is joining, moving on for another position with Bosse's, I believe. So good luck to her. All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby grants Susan O'Connell a one-year leave of absence from her current position as a school psychologist in the district, effective September 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2019, as per Document 44/19, and be it further resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education hereby appoints Susan O'Connell, who has been previously tenured as a teacher in this school district, to the position of CSE, CPSE chairperson, commencing on September 1st, 2018, in her tenured area of school psychologist in the district on Step 16 MA of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. O'Connell holds school psychologist permanent certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hannah, you want to say anything?
I'll make a few comments. So Susan O'Connell has worked at our elementary school. I'm going into my 17th year. I think she's going into her 15th year here in the district. She is just a strong clinician who has great judgment, great connections with our students, with our teachers, is firm when she needs to be, but yet incredibly empathetic and compassionate. I think she's perfect for the position. I'm so grateful that she wants to take this opportunity to see if it's a good fit for her. She's just a really strong candidate that we have, internal candidate, and I'm, I'm grateful that I'll get to work with her in this capacity.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number three. Thank you.
Be it resolved that the Board hereby terminates the employment of Employee Number 08062018211, effective August 21st, 2018, in accordance with the provisions of Section 71 of the Civil Service Law, with the opportunity to be reinstated to the same or a similar position if a vacancy exists upon making application therefore within one year after termination of the disability.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to appoint Daniella Sinapi as a five-monthly replacement teacher at the elementary school, effective September 1st, 2018, through January 31st, 2019, or sooner, at the discretion of the Board of Education, on Step 1 MA prorated of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Sinapi holds childhood education 1 through 6 initial certification and students with disabilities 1 through 6 initial certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five. Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Nicole.
Facacessia.
Facacessia to an 11-week-long, 11-week, long-term substitute position as a special education math teacher at the high school, effective September 26th, 2018, through December 14th, 2018, or sooner, at the discretion of the Board of Education, at the rate of $150 per day, and approve three days of training prior to her start date of September 26th, on September 12th, 13th, and 14th, 2018, at $150 per day. Misfit.
Facacessia.
Facacessia holds students with disabilities generalist 7 through 12 professional certification and math 712 professional certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number six.
Resolved on recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to appoint Harriet, Harriet Godisfeld to a probationary appointment of a school monitor, effective September 4, 2018, with a minimum probation period of eight weeks, October 30th, 2018, and a maximum of 52 weeks, September 3rd, 2019, at the elementary school on Step 1 of the CSE salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number seven.
Be it resolved that the resolution approved by the Board at the August 16, 2018, board meeting abolishing 3.35 FTE teaching assistance position is hereby amended to reduce the abolition positions to 1.35 FTE teaching assistant positions and be it further resolved that a district clerk is directed to notify the affected employee that his or her position has been reinstated, effective August 31st, 2018.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number eight.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the first reading of revisions to Code of Conduct Policy 5300.30, prohibited student conduct, as per Document 43/19, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
And also, as was mentioned before, we will have a public meeting on Thursday, September 20th, at approximately 6:30 before our board meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the consent agenda. Number one.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda items 2 through 13 as presented at the board meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving administrative and middle school lunch monitors. We're approving training for our nurse. We're approving summer clerco hours for people at the high school for two staff members. We're approving CSE, CPSE placements. We're approving a special curriculum class agreement with Garrison and Haldane for some of their students so we can share services. We're approving the supervisor for the fitness center. We're approving that all staff members can be chaperones at events that they attend. Appoint, we're appointing the head building mentors at the high school, Ms. Hannah for the high school, Ms. Belfort for the middle school, and Ms. Phillips for the elementary school. We're approving instructional school specialist, Matt Mello at the high school, Cheryl Khan at the, for specialist literary and Michael Coleman for elementary math, and these are approximately a point-two appointments, and Pat Vanderbilt, just under point-oh-seven in math for grade 6 through 8. We're approving an E&amp;L department coordinator, Ms. Franz for about one, one-tenth of an, of a period. And we're appointing two arrival and dismissal staff to help at the middle school when the children leave and show up, and we're approving additions to the substitute to list.
It was point-six-seven, point-zero-six-seven.
Oh, yeah, six, I'm sorry.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I would like to open it up to public comment on any topic at all. Okay? And I do look forward to our next September meeting. I hope we get, I believe the principals will be here to give us their reports. And we invite parents to please let us know how they feel the late start time has been going. You know, by then we'll have hopefully worked out the kinks, so we do want to hear from the community. Anything else from any board member? I did ask for public comment on any non-agenda items.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
They refused.
Well, they don't have any right now, that's fine.
Declined, declined.
I'd like a motion to adjourn the work session business meeting.
So moved.
Questions or comment? Thank you. Questions and comments?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Happy school year.